So um I think we might as well begin because we've got a lot of uh of material to go through um. The first item of uh business is uh do we need to do a sign in, I mean a a verbal Cassandra or?
Like a roll call?
Roll call.
Yes, you're supposed to do a verbal roll call.
Let me start off with Woody Chittick uh present.
Hey McMorris present.
Charlie Higginsson.
Lee Dars present.
Uh Mike Ticky present.
Matt Watkins present.
Okay, so the bo- zoning board is all here. The first item is the uh annual Board of Appeals reorganization. Um a little different than years past um. As most of you know, I've requested and been granted uh the opportunity to switch um um uh positions with uh Matt Watkins. I'm gonna go on uh I'm gonna continue the remainder of his term of one year. He's gonna take my term as a regular member for two years and as a result, I can no longer be chair. Um so I would uh like to hear uh nominations for uh chair. Um first, then we can deal with the vice chair and clerk.
I nominate David McMorris to be the chair.
Seconded.
Okay, that's moved and seconded. Uh other nominations. Uh uh hearing none, I would um put it to a vote of the full board, um not just the regular members, so. Um let's start off with uh Dave McMorris. Would you accept that position?
I would, yes.
All right, Matt.
Yes.
Okay, uh Charlie.
Uh yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Mike.
Yep.
And Woody, yes. Okay, so we now have a new chair. Um I suppose it's appropriate to turn it over to Dave with congratulations um and uh we're looking for nominations uh for vice chair.
I nominate Matt Matt Matthew Watkins.
I would second that.
Charlie Higginsson seconded, yes.
I'm sorry, what did you say, Charlie?
I said yes.
Oh, okay. All right, so that's on the floor, Dave. Um.
Any other nominations? All right, what's all in favor of Matt as vice chair? Dave McMorris, I.
Woody Chittick, I.
Charlie Higginsson, I.
Lee Dars, I.
Uh Mike Ticky, I.
Matt Watkins, I.
We forgot to ask if you accept.
We'll come after you. Um who's uh who's a present clerk, Cassandra?
So uh Montana was your clerk because she took your minutes.
Right.
Um I would make the recommendation to at this time, since we already have the name of the person to um be taking her position um to nominate them as your clerk. Her name is Julia Gillis. Um and she'll be starting on Monday. Um but if you wanted to just kinda get that out of the way and then we can do more formal introductions at your next meeting.
I I would nominate Julia.
Seconded.
I have not met, but. Okay, so Dave, you voted, yeah?
Any other nominations for clerk?
Any other non- nominee like Cassandra Thayer? I mean, are there other uh? Couldn't slide that one through, could we?
Julia Gillis is clerk. Dave McMorris, I.
Matt Watkins, I.
Chittick, I.
Charlie Higginsson, I.
Lee Dars, I.
Mike Ticky, I.
All right. So that's uh the three positions are unanimously approved. So Dave again has the chair. Um and I'll turn it over to him.
All right. Well, the first um the first hearing or continued hearing, I believe, is for Great Booster Trail. Uh but before we start that, I just wanna run through quickly. Um who's who's writing that one?
I was.
Okay. And and I'm writing Howard Gleason, eighteen Elm Street. Is that a new application?
The rest of your applications are new.
Okay.
Um so you could either assign them now or you could sign them when the hearing starts.
I'm gonna get it out of the way because I'll forget.
I'll I'll take any any one of them because I'm not conflicted by my daughter or anything.
Okay, does anybody have a want to volunteer for any of them?
Dave, I mentioned at the beginning only that I have to take a different work meeting at eight, so I can take either of them, whether it be like I could take the first one or I could take the dock one and just catch up on the mullin if we don't get to it. Um.
Why don't you take the dock one because it would be allowed us to catch up on?
Okay. So I'll take the border street dock one.
I haven't done one in a while. I could do um seven twenty-three Jerusalem Road.
Okay, so that leaves uh one thirty-seven Nichols and eighteen Elm.
Uh running out of volunteers, so uh I'm happy to uh I I'll do, how about the uh one thirty-seven Nichols Road?
Okay.
Okay.
And Woody, that leaves you with eighteen Elm Street.
All right.
No, this is a grand slam for us.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, who's doing Howard Gleason?
I am.
Okay.
Okay.
Good.
So um Cassandra, can you bring up our panels for the Four Great Booster Trail?
Yes, I'm bringing them in now.
I sent out a uh a message that I wasn't gonna submit a decision uh but that uh a number of the figures are in my mind in error and I would like to ask the parties to uh uh submit uh or correct these things. The primary iss- issue is the uh uh front uh setback uh and uh the all the figures and our site plan, I I believe, are based upon uh the thirty-foot uh site uh um front front uh setback. However, uh for Stagecoach Trail is not forty feet wide and therefore there's a new calculation for the uh setback uh and that changes just about everything in the whole uh in the.
Charlie, you said Stagecoach Trail, you mean Great Booster Trail?
Excuse me, great, uh yes, 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 Great Booster Trail.
All right, so Brendan Sullivan, are you presenting on this one?
Yep, I'm representing the um the owners, so um so I didn't I didn't hear the first without Charlie, so some of the um so were you referring to the um if a ways less than forty feet in width, you add twenty feet measured to the center line of it?
Yes.
Um am I not mistaken or or has that been eliminated from the zoning by law? I thought that was eliminated the last round of town meeting. Not last town meeting, the town meeting before.
Gosh, I I hadn't heard that. Might be. John, do you know? You're muted, John, so.
I, yep, I just got I uh the November town meeting, I just got the paperwork today and I was putting it in and I hadn't read through it, but I didn't um I mean, we could pause for a minute and and look up three sixty, that's updated uh there, but I think you might be right, but I'm not sure.
I I don't think it was last November, I think it was the um
The annual in last May?
I think so, the annual in twenty twenty-three.
I have three sixty up right now. Brendan, do you happen to have the um?
Hmm.
Do you remember the number?
I don't. I thought it was a footnote in the zoning table.
It is.
Okay.
So if you look at the um the requirements, the uh the table itself, I think um so I think what the planning board did was they just they submit, they they didn't like strike out what they eliminated, they just did a new chart and stuff.
Correct.
And they just they left some numbers and abstracts out of it, so I don't.
Was that deliberate, do you think? I was unaware of any.
I I don't know because they, you know, as Charlie knows, they got rid of a uh section in there that allows you to subdivide land if you have, you know, more than a hundred twenty thousand square feet in a sixty thousand zone without even knowing that they eliminated it. So um I I think they just rewrote some stuff and um and didn't, I don't know if they they, you know, on purpose or, you know, but they they eliminated a bunch of uh, I say a bunch, some footnotes.
There were some that were eliminated. Um I'm not seeing that in the new chart. So you could be correct and then it was eliminated.
You may be correct, but I'm wondering if it was uh deliberate or or a mistake.
Either way, it's gone, right?
Right.
Um. Maybe you could ask you could ask the planning board. That the guy.
Or town council. I mean, if it's gone, it it, you know, to your point, I mean Brendan, it's not uh a deliberate mistake in your part, you're you're following the bylaws that were passed, but where was that, were they left out inadvertently? Or was this an intentional deletion? I don't remember any discussion whatsoever. I mean, here in Cohasset. Does anybody else in the board remember a a discussion that uh Mike, would you have had a discussion on the zoning bylaw group?
Not that I recall.
This. I have no no recollection of a discussion uh on the amended uh uh site plan. It it is repeated uh uh so uh uh I I don't know. That missing the the shed in the back of of the lot uh uh has no dimensions to it, so it's a little difficult to uh figure out uh uh the the coverage. Uh uh thirdly, there's a added uh stoop and staircase in the driveway on the easterly uh uh side of the lot. Again, that isn't uh doesn't give me any uh 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 dimensions to figure out whether uh that has been added or subtracted uh 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 from the uh the uh lot in in the calculation of coverage uh. And that is further using because uh that blocks the driveway uh uh that is a recuto there or or what's the solution? And this gets all involved in the various regulations on driveways, uh the right of way. The uh 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 um fi- fi- uh five feet back from the um front property line uh and uh the uh five-foot uh setback, not setback, but uh and driveway cannot be uh closer to uh the uh side of property line than five feet. Uh uh uh.
Well, it, yeah, but looking at this, it's thirteen point five feet. I I'm looking at the only site plan I have, which is received April twenty-six.
Yep, that's.
And if you take five feet away from the thirteen-five, it's eight point five, and I think, isn't the what's the legal driveway width, the little driveway width, is it? For parking, six feet?
Uh the driveway is twelve feet. There's I do not believe there's anything uh on on parking except the uh the the schedule in the uh as to how wide or long a uh uh a a legal parking spot is. And uh there would be room for one car. There would not be room for two cars. And if you increase the uh the uh bedrooms by double the number of bedrooms from two to four, you're probably gonna have two cars. And then comes the next problem is that uh there's no parking on uh for uh Great Booster uh um and uh then which is a private way. And uh Highland uh street it the uh closest also has uh no parking, so I don't I I would like to discuss this with the board. What what is the board uh feel you? If you you can't park near it and you can't park two cars in that garage, is that uh count uh if you had to?
Could they add two parking spaces in the uh rear of the lot?
Uh no, because you can't get by the uh the stairs stoop.
So so if I could, if I could chime in?
Yeah.
Possibly so. Um uh so I pulled up my plan, hope you can see it. Um so the 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 driveway, we're moving the bitcon driveway to um decrease our uh lot coverage calculation. Uh we're removing that eastern portion of the building, uh which has an existing setback of seven point four. Um the new setback to the stoop is gonna be seven point seven. Um previously, you weren't able to drive around and get to the back of the of the dwelling. There's enough room from the stoop to the property line is is just about thirty feet. So that's about
Yeah.
about enough space for two cars to stack. Um you know, one after the other. Um the applicants know they can't park in in Great Booster Trail, it's a private way. There's easements, you know, even outside of the edge of the pavement that they they don't, they don't even have ownership in or easements over. Um as far as the the five-foot setback for the driveway, um I mean, it's it's an existing condition, I believe. And I think we've we've talked about this before. Um whereas, you know, the the driveway is already there. It probably even goes spills over into into the other lot by a couple inches in some areas. Um but I think there's adequate parking there uh for two vehi- for two vehicles. Um and if you, it's so, and the stoop um that is seven point seven feet off of that side setback, that doesn't have a roof on it, so that's not covered in the that's not counted in the lot coverage calculations, nor is the rear deck. The only thing that's counted in the lot coverage calculations for structure um is the proposed addition and the existing portion of the dwelling that's to remain in the front portion of the house. Um so and that include, and then the shed is gonna be removed, so we're using that, that is part of the existing calculation for um lot coverage. So the lot coverage is really just gonna be roof over the living space. Um not the proposed stoop on the side or the deck in the back, and the shed will be removed.
And how big is this shed?
Um. I could possibly pull that up.
I I think Charlie's right in wanting those dimensions to be part of a decision of shed of you know, X by Y uh will be removed and, you know, so on and so forth, rather than just a shed.
It's approximately square eight-four by eight-four, so approximately sixty-four square feet, just over sixty-four square feet.
And um on the parking a dwelling must have one in an RB district must have uh one unit. But I, for the life of me, I couldn't find out what a unit was.
Um.
But but
The parking, I believe, for a single-family home, I believe, is two spaces?
Yes, you're right.
Um and.
It's two, that's correct, two units, two units, not one unit.
No, no, even for one unit, it's two spaces.
Yeah, so it's for a single-family home, it's it's two spaces and that, and that's regardless, so it's not based on bedrooms, it's based on, you know, a home. So whether the home has one bedroom or ten bedrooms, it's not required to have two spaces. Um we and we feel we can adequately park two spaces in the existing location of the uh driveway that's there today.
And.
Once the pavement's removed.
Therefore, the the chart, which I believe takes lengthwise twenty feet uh per space, we can ignore?
Um well, I I also believe there's enough room to get by as they have been in the past, because we're gaining, you know, we're gaining another three or four inches from the property line to this. It's not, you know, it's gonna be a stoop, it's gonna be a step there. Um you know, going from seven-four to seven-seven, they've typically driven past that and parked in the back as well.
Uh final hurdle is uh recommend it is not an assist that you don't back out onto a street. Uh uh and to uh to to weigh that uh you have to uh the second restriction is uh that it uh not create any tr- traffic problems.
Well, I I think that's an existing condition that's there today, and I think we all know the Great Booster Trail, I think there's one.
I think we can.
Maybe three houses up to the end of Great Booster Trail, and I know there's a a public trail at the end of the Great Booster Trail, but it it's Great Booster Trail by no means gets traffic like North Main Street or anything.
It's a dead end and there are three uh. The new house, I'm not sure where it's how where it comes out. Otherwise, it's three.
That's up, that's up up in the northeast corner of the
Yeah.
the drawing here, so.
So I presume that that makes it four houses.
But I don't think there's a lot of traffic there to warrant that, and it's not like we're creating um you know, it's an existing condition that's there today where they back out. I don't think a lot of the driveways out of there even have backouts, I'm not, I'm not even sure.
Some do, some do.
Yep.
Well. Given with the corrected figures, which I could estimate uh the um I think we could say yes to the various enlargements of non-conformity. Uh the on the basis that one uh they uh there's no other house within fifty feet of uh or uh of the uh uh for Station Coach uh Station, sorry, uh Booster Trail. Uh and Booster Trail being a dead end doesn't have high traffic uh so that we can uh uh avoid that. Uh and uh my inclination to was for a recommendation that we uh uh ac- accept these as uh allowing us to vote in favor of these extension of non-conformities.
All right, does anyone else have any question or comments or?
I I just would like to clarify off uh not in this hearing with town council and or Tom Callahan, whether that um the issue of an undersized road, you know, the um plus twenty feet, et cetera, was intentionally removed or not. It probably, if it's been removed and doesn't appear anyplace else in these bylaws, it is at the very least, in my estimation, that kind of a temporary pass. They may wish to reinstate it unless it was, they intended it to be removed. I I don't know what the, you know. Might have had good reason, I just don't know what the, we never had discussion.
Yeah.
But I I don't think it would affect the decision as much as um going forward, this is used, this provision you know, has been used a few times every year.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it it just kind of disappeared from five point two, and I don't see it migrating anywhere else.
Yeah, I, yeah, I mean, i- if it was intentionally removed uh I would like to know the reasoning, but um but if it was inadvertently removed, removed, it seems to be, I'd just like to double-check. Not here in the hearing, but make sure it didn't show up in some other strange place in the bylaws.
Yeah, that and, you know, when we were redoing all these, they're supposed to be housekeeping, they're not supposed to be substantive. And that seems like a substantive change.
Yeah, we were told there were, there were no s- no substantive changes uh. So maybe we can find out, but not take our time here tonight would be my recommendation, Dave.
So I agree.
Uh uh I'm pretty sure uh Tom would uh be able to sell you chapter and chapter and verse in it, or it just may be a a Scribner's error.
Right, if it's a Scribner's error, we could, it could be corrected, but it can't be retroactively corrected, but um hey, Mike, would you, I'm just thinking out loud, as a member of that committee, could you reach out to Tom and find out with if this was intentional or not and at the very least, it it was intentional, I'd certainly like, as a party of one member here uh a discussion with the uh committee, but.
And 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 just 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 for um uh 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 you know, what what could 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 we, could you repeat exactly what the issue is? I I don't wanna miscommunicate things, Tom, so I'd rather kinda make sure I'm asking it the right question.
No, there, okay, there is a condition in the bylaws that say says, and I think it's the footnote uh way in the very back. I don't have an up-to-date bylaw, so I can't reference whatever the you know, numbering is.
Yeah.
But um um
It was originally, it was
Eighteen or?
No, section five point two. Um. Yeah. Um and that was kind of general provisions on the area regulations.
Yeah, yeah, five, five-two-F.
Mm-hmm.
Uh the minimum five-two-F, the minimum required setback distance for a structure shall be measured from the front lot line, provided, however, that where a street has a right-of-way width of less than forty feet. The setback distance shall include an additional twenty feet and be measured from the center line. And.
A lot of that migrated to the new five-point-four. You know, the fen- fence hedge wall, blah, blah, blah. A lot of that's now in five-point-four, but it's not, that piece is not in five-point-four. A lot of the old five-point-two is now five-point-four.
Okay. So the question is, why was five-point-two-F not moved along with the rest of five-point-four uh five-point-two into what is now the new five-point-four? Relatively good recap?
Very well put. And as you say, if it's a Scribner's error, I I think we should uh talk to the. talk to the committee and deal with it uh at their earliest convenience, if it was intentional, I think we should just understand why. Because it's been in the bylaws for ever and a day.
And as you said, it does muck regularly.
Yeah, so it's a, I would expect there to be a substitute for it if it's not a Scrivener's error. Anyway, Mike, that's, you can.
I can, I can reach out to my buddy, Tom.
Good man.
Alright, um is there any further discussion on the four Great Brewster Trail application? Uh, yes, uh I would like to uh request the party to uh check the figures, put an exact figure on the sh- on the uh shack that's being removed. Uh uh and uh, oh, I I didn't say one thing. A driveway is meant to be twelve feet wide. Uh you could squeeze by that uh that uh stoop staircase uh, but uh it would not be twelve feet wide. So therefore, I, in my view, we've got to accept uh that as a nonconforming, but uh feature of the of the law. Is that a new nonconformity?
Think if I understood it, Charlie, the only thing we can say there would be that it it was originally seven point four and it's being improved to seven point seven, does that sound correct, Brendan? No, no?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Alright, I think. Uh I I believe, it's very crowded in that spot in the uh 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 site plan. The new stoop and staircase will extend further, but still will be, you know, a car could squeeze by, but it is uh narrower than it used to be. That's why I want the figures.
Well, it'll it'll be wider than it was, than it used to be, it was seven four, it's going to seven seven.
These, the driveway?
Yes.
Can you put the plan back up? Look, look at the uh site plan, the site plan shows it uh extending wider than the part that's being removed and doesn't give you uh uh what that dimension is.
So the the seven four dimension is to the existing portion that's being removed, and the seven seven is to the the bottom stoop step.
Yeah.
Seven, seven, so we're we're gaining three tenths there. And the the rear of the dwelling is thirteen, five off of the property line. We're not getting any narrower, we we're actually gaining a little bit. Which, like I said, that they've done in the past, you know, pretty regularly is is parked behind this um bump out in the house and parked back in this area, which they'll probably continue to do.
Alright, Charlie, do you, do you need some um? I guess we probably should continue this so you can get the information you need to draft the decision.
Yes.
And we'll finish it up next time.
Okay, so I'll I'll give you an area of the the shed that's being removed, and I'll give you a a a total area of the what's gonna be constructed on the lot to get to our to make sure we don't get over our twenty percent for building coverage.
That's what I'm worried about.
Okay.
And well, also, the the area of the part of the building next to the driveway that's being taken down, there there's no final length uh uh figure that I could find.
Okay, and you want those fig- you want those figures, yeah, maybe I'll make another table on here, but but what what's being taken down, what's being added to?
That would be great.
I'll clarify those things.
Okay, anything else you need, Charlie? That that's it. Alright. And if you can get those to Cassandra uh so then I can plug them in and have a decision ready uh uh.
Yeah, I'll.
Meeting.
Yeah, I'll have it way before next meeting.
Well, well, the other al- alternative, if I could jump in, Cassandra, John, don't we have two weeks after making a decision to file it?
You do have some time.
Yes.
So you could make a decision tonight, Brendan could.
Subject to or or, you know, provided that he supplies those numbers, but
Yes.
The next two weeks, and um we wouldn't have to wait until August.
Correct.
That might be easier than letting this thing limp along for another thirty days or whatever.
I have a final problem. It turns out that uh uh Great uh Brewster Trail is owned by the Cohasset Conservation Trust. And I happen to be a trustee of the Cohasset Conservation Trust, do you think this qualifies me? I don't, I can't imagine there's any financial impact or implications for the trust. So I wouldn't think so.
We've, yeah, we've, Dave, we've uh run into this from time to time, particularly with yacht club members. Uh, you know, but if they're not, uh, you know, in the ex- at the executive committee level or or have a vested interest in the outcome, um the board is always operated in the premise that it's a small town and you know, there's gonna be some affiliation probably before us, be it church or club or uh something else.
I think if the if the trust was opposing this, it would be different, but the trust isn't appearing and doesn't seem to have any financial interest in this whatsoever, so I don't see a problem with that, Charlie. Does anybody else? Alright, does anybody else have any questions about this application? Brendan, are they in a rush to get this done, or is it two weeks to make make a difference?
They were planning on start banging some nails soon, so. I mean, if we could wrap it up, like, you know, think like Woody said, if we could wrap it up, that'd be great.
Alright, then let's um.
Also, also, uh, Dave or Brendan too, we could accept the application at the building process building department, start the process, even without this information, it just won't be issued to, we have a final decision, so that will give him a few weeks to at least have the fire department and all the other departments sign off on his permit, so we can accept it that way. And we just won't issue it to, we get the.
We have to have a decision out within two weeks after we close the hearing.
Right, so what I'm saying is is I could issue the permit after that, but I could accept the permit prior to that, so they could at least make some headway in getting the other signatures they need for the different departments.
Alright, so.
That's helpful.
I guess I'll move that we we close this hearing, subject to the applicant getting the necessary information to to Cassandra within two weeks.
You wanna later on?
Do we have to have a a decision issued within two weeks of closing the hearing?
Yes, it needs to be filed.
Okay, so you've gotta get the the information to him in a couple of days.
Uh, I'll have it by the end of the week.
Okay, does that work for you, Charlie? Yeah, that gives me a week to plug it in and give it to Cassandra. Alright, then I move we close the hearing.
And and I'm actually uh, I'm out on this one, because of
Oh.
Don't want to.
I think uh.
I think everyone else is in though.
Yeah.
David missed a meeting.
I think.
I I might be out on it too, but.
I don't recall, I don't have my notes in front of me, I think both of you are out on it.
Okay, why doesn't someone else uh make the motion then?
I I I'll make a motion to um, are we making a motion to to close the hearing and deliberate later on, uh, you know, at this meeting and then subject to filing it within two weeks?
Yes.
I'd make that motion, that we close the hearing will uh to be deliberated on uh later this evening.
Second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Lee Darcey.
I'm like, yeah.
Alright. Uh, hearing's closed, and we move on to.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, the next one is ninety-eight dash one oh four Howard Gleason Road. There's a common driveway and utilities special permit. So who's who's being on this one, is Brendan, you on this?
Brendan, are you on this one?
Yes, yep.
Okay, um, who else do you need? I see Caroline's in the audience, do you need her?
Uh, no, I think Jeff Delisi, if he's in there, I think I see him raising his hand.
Perfect, and I will promote him.
You know how those lawyers like to talk?
They do.
Oh, he didn't, he didn't hear me, he was.
I'm here, I did not hear you.
Oh, good, good.
And and it sounds like the board has a lot of business on its agenda tonight, so I'm just gonna let you explain what has happened since the last meeting, we can just get on with it.
Okay, um, so I think Carmen presented this plan to the group before, um. So I took over most of her jobs now, so I think substantively substantively um you wanted the additional owner for um the Skullins added as owners for the project. Uh, because a portion of the project is mostly on their property, it's an easement over their property for the common driveway. Uh, so that has been added to the plan, and since that meeting as well, we've had a couple of meetings with uh conservation and a site walk. Um, and they were concerned about the number of trees that are being removed and whatnot, and there was also a stone wall that was uh constructed by the Skullins along the Westerly Lot Line as you enter. Um, so that was added to the plan, and when we added that to the plan and staked out the common driveway, um, the pavement can actually came into the stone wall a little bit, so we had to shift the driveway um closer to the wetlands, not as close to the existing edge of pavement, um, but it was shifted, let's say, to the, um, let's say, north is going to the left. So we shifted to the east approximately three, three and a half feet. So with that, that was shifted, um, and we created, we got rid of the um berm at that portion of the driveway, uh, they were concerned about because if you do remember, the driveway's pitched to one side, and we have a berm on the downslope side, and all the water runs down the gutter and into a catch basin, but the last two hundred feet of the driveway, um, there was no catch basin structure. So the water was just spilling out onto Howard Gleason Road. So the Conservation Commission recommended maybe getting rid of that berm, keeping the stone, the foot and a half of crushed stone. Um, it may be presenting doing a uh stone trench for treatment beyond that, and then also a smaller swale with some salt tolerant species. Um, so it would kind of let the water spill over as it does today. Uh, spill will run to the lawn area, and then eventually into the adjacent wetland area. Um, and then eventually across wetland area in into the pipe that discharges into the harbor further down Howard Gleason Road. So we've added approximately twelve new trees, and with those small changes in the realignment of the common driveway.
And just to remind the the board, um, the planning board is this is the special permit granting authority for purposes of of the common driveway um use, and they've already issued a special permit. The uh reason for this requested special permit is to construct uh portions of the driveway and utilities within the floodplain, which is a special permit use under the zoning bylaw. And um Brendan, just to confirm, um, net-net uh is more water reaching uh Howard Gleason Road after this project than is presently reaching Howard Gleason Road with the existing common driveway?
No, there there'll be less water heading towards Howard Gleason Road.
Okay. Alright, so I don't have anything further.
Alright, um, I I drafted a decision on this, I, this is one of those applications where we have very limited jurisdiction, and it, most of our jurisdiction overlaps with what the Conservation Commission does. They have a lot more expertise on most of this than we do. Um, I I don't really have any questions now, I have I have no questions that I didn't have resolved before. Does anyone else have a question?
Brendan, you said they issued an order of conditions, that's still in progress.
No, we're uh we're back in front of them uh Thursday night.
Okay. Yeah, my only thought initially, David, was I agree with you that, because the planning board signed off on it, it's it's kind of more of a conservation issue, but I guess one question I'd throw out there is like, so should our verification or sign-off come before the order of conditions, because for example, like when we were just looking at that, you know, slope and the rain garden and things like that, that's typically not something where like you know, we opine on whether the rain garden is a good feature in that area or or not for it, so that would be the only question I would.
I guess that is a good question, Matt, because if if the Conservation Commission comes up with other design changes, then this plan will change.
Yeah, because it sounds like it changed a little bit since our last meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Approaching a little further into the wetland and kind of some modifications, so that that's what I would wonder on it.
Th- this all falls, I think, under uh nine, seven, F and G, or at least the old numbering, I don't have to know the new numbering system. But the old was that it has to be a uh the maintenance of a driveway of minimum legal and practical width where alternative means aren't available. And uh the installation and maintenance of underground utilities, provided the area affected is restored substantially to its original condition, so this doesn't really tie us down to a specific uh landscaping plan, as I read it.
Changes at the next um meeting in any way, but what what I guess our decision would be approving this plan, right?
Yeah, I mean, they could, conservation can require them to move the road more, and that would be, you know, kind of cancel out any decisions that we made, we'd have to come back and do it again.
So the the alternative, if the board is comfortable, might be to uh to issue a decision with the condition that it's subject to the Conservation Commission's approval and modifications. Um, and if the board is not comfortable doing that, uh, then I think that it would just be appropriate to request a continuance until the commission has completed its um approval process.
Is this, is there a rush to get this approved, or do you have a moment?
Um, I think if the board has a decision, you know, already drafted and could could kind of uh close and vote, you know, at 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 the next meeting, I I think, you know, we've waited this long, this project has has been kind of in the queue for some period of time, and we could wait one more hearing.
Alright, well, that's, I think that's probably the best thing to do, so we don't have to reopen it and all that.
I agree.
So I would move that we continue this, uh, like, anybody else have questions, comments? Anybody from the audience with their hand up, Cassandra?
Br- Brendan, do you have any particular issue with um what I've just said, have you been in communication with our client more recently than myself?
Uh, nope, I don't think so, I think that, I think that sounds about right, uh, just as long as, you know, um, unlike the la- the last plan, so we're not looking for any any changes, additions, subtractions to the plan. As long as conservation's okay with it, you guys are okay with it, that's kind of what I'm hearing.
Yep. Okay.
To answer your question, Dave, uh, no, there is nobody in the audience or in the Q and A raising their hands. Um, I did just want to make the point, though, since we were discussing melon forms earlier, that um I will need yours completed for this. Um, I will need yours completed for this application prior to the next meeting.
I have it right here, all signed, so. Alright, I'd move that we continue this until our August meeting.
Second.
Any others in favor? Dave McMorrissey?
Matt Watkins, aye.
When you should a guy?
Lee Darstai.
Uh, Mike Tikiye.
Thank you for all the ayes. We'll see.
Thank you.
So the next one is one forty.
No, it's uh eighteen Elm, I think, isn't it?
Eighteen Elm, great, right? Okay. So who do we have presenting for the applicant on this one, Cassandra?
So you have uh Jed Hannan, who is being promoted as a panelist now. And Jed, if you have anybody else with you that needs to be promoted, just let me know.
Okay, great. Thank you. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
Excellent. So this uh application is a special permit application, as you're aware, for uh a retaining wall. Under section uh three hundred dash eighteen of the Cohasset ZBA bylaws. All the butters have been notified. The situation with this project, as John Helen is well aware, is um there was a building permit issued. For the rehab of the existing uh apartment building and dwelling. And in the course of, basically after the issuance of the building permit. There was some retaining wall work that was started. Um, there was an agreement made to with the Historical Society. To allow an encroachment. Of the existing dilapidated retaining wall onto their property. There was a deal made and then un- unfortunately, that did not work out. And after the fact, uh, the was agreed to to pull the retaining wall back towards the property. And at that time, uh, John Helen informed us that a special permit was needed. Um, and we went over the site plan. Basically, it's a pre-existing non-conforming lot in terms of lot size and existing setbacks. Again, the wall was dilapidated and uh needed to be. Significantly repaired and also raised for um for access. I was there today to inspect um the work. Uh, John Helen allowed the work to proceed, subject to the ZBA approval. And the owner decided to proceed, you know, at risk with the construction of the retaining wall, which we designed. Um, again, I was out there today. Everything looks like it's in pretty good shape. There's a forty-two inch top rail that needs to go in to be compliant with. Um, fall exposure for building code requirements. So I know that that has been ordered. Uh, they have a temporary fence in place. So that's it's safe, um, as safe as it can be. Uh, but the work is substantially complete. Um, I'd be happy to share my screen to go over the site plan and any of the setbacks. That the board would like to go over. Unless you have the screen already up.
I don't want to be nitpicky, but um why is this before the zoning board and not the planning board? The planning board has a special permit authority in the Village Business District.
Uh, so we were advised by. Uh, Tom Hamilton, he's the owner. Um, his attorney reached out. I believe the town council of John Helen, and this was the the appropriate uh. You know, permit to apply for, given.
Is this in writing uh or just a verbal?
Uh, tha- that was verbally from the town council. There uh, it was a structure of the wall because of the height. And uh just the structure being too close to the property.
I still don't think a structure, uh, help me, John. I don't understand why a structure. Um, puts it back into the zoning board's hands. Um. They certainly have, the planning board certainly can deal with accessory dwelling units, dwellings for more than one family. Um, uh, home occupa- you know, so on and so forth.
Yeah, I I mean, I I think it would be picture of the same of uh as a. A secondary structure, it's like a shed or or something like that. That's that's where the stone wall, that's why we put it back.
And and where is that in the in the table of uses that that it it? It's the zoning board.
Uh, I thought it was uh.
It may be.
Yeah, I I think of the ta- uh, going back and forth between the old and the new ones, plus the the new table of uses, I think it's. Uh, one of the. Astros with the setbacks for the structures. Uh, it's more than. Um, I think more than ten feet or fifteen feet in height.
So it doesn't qualify as the three-foot or less?
No.
Fence or anything of that sort, which is right. I I still. I'd like to see something personally. I mean, I would like to see something from the town council in writing that says, here's where you go. I don't have the new set of bylaws, so.
I know the old one had said the Village Bi- Business District. You know, a permitted structure. It referred you to the um. You know, I was looking earlier at this footnote number one. You know, which is um. But it's a little bit vague because it. It says, you know, if you're less than ten feet from the side property line, you would require. This um.
But but specifically authorized by grant of a special permit by the special permit granting.
Yeah.
And the special permit granting authority is the the planning board.
Yeah. The only one, though, just thinking out loud. We we had this. Does this fall into the same? Overlay is like fifteen Brook Street. Remember, we got kind of pulled in on that one, and I don't know.
Shed or something or?
Yeah, I was wondering the same thing, Matt.
But that was because it was near the brook, wasn't it? That was in the. In a, it was within so many feet of the water, which is why we were on Brook Street.
I thought it was like a residential property on the. On the fringe of the uh.
Yeah, where'd the chart go?
Hello?
Are you looking for the chart in the ECO three sixty?
Yeah.
It's um, they integrated. They integrated it into it. It's not as an attachment anymore, so it's under uh four point two.
Four point two.
All the way down.
Now I see, I had to tap that little symbol.
I would think personally footnote one says it's the planning board. I mean, I don't mind. You know, as a party of one out of six, holding a big hearing, but I it. I'm a little uncomfortable. Rendering a decision if we don't have the authority to do so.
Well. And this is village business.
Did did footnote one get carried over into four point two?
Right. Footnote one says. That um. Special permits and BB are subject to the additional requirements. Specified in Article eighteen. Um, but as far as. Yeah, this is all the residential uses are SPP. Yeah, I.
My recommendation is go to town council and have. That person give us something in writing that explains why we have jurisdiction. But I mean, you know, we could render a decision.
If the rest of the board is comfortable with that, um. I'm sure the owner would would prefer that and. We could condition it such that, you know, subject to town council's, you know, review.
Dave, your chair, what do you think? I mean, are we? Is there any harm in our potentially overstepping our our jurisdiction? I mean.
It's possible, uh, it's probable, actually, um. But if, I mean, they're in the process of building this thing. So.
Yeah.
This is gonna come back to us. I don't really want to delay it.
Yeah, I could see no reason not to approve it if if it were rightly before us.
Okay, well, it's it's gonna be your your.
Yeah, decision.
Decision, right, so. Um, you know, went to clear up any questions that you have about it. I think we can write it and say that our, you know.
Yeah.
It's we're approve a special permit, subject to the. Proper granting authority. If not, the decision's void.
Right, and then, yeah. I I'd be kind of curious, does the board, since I've got a right decision, does the board have concerns about the retaining wall as it's designed and in process? Anybody?
Is it, how visible is it from the street?
Um, I mean, he he it is in the back of the yard and it's a little different because the um. Structure is uh has two, is the. Well, right away on one side and Elm Street on the other side, so. There, but the tier difference is you have to look up to see it. So visible from a straight line from the street, no, you don't see it. But uh a- again, the visibility, you have to look up to see it. And uh the other portion of it is a safety factor uh from the. Uh, the backside, uh, uh, the the retaining wall did create a buffer between the hill that. Quite steep that goes down there, so uh that was the um. Eliminated a detriment that was uh existing.
And is there pushback from the Historical Society, Joe?
What was that, Matt?
Is there pushback from the Historical Society or no?
Not at this point. They uh, the applicant removed, at one point they were on a historical society. Um, land, they kind of started without a permit. Uh, so they pulled all that back once the Historical Society uh couldn't come to an agreement. Um, so they are not on a historical society land at all now.
Cause they started this in the fall, didn't they?
Yes.
I remember walking up there and seeing people on Sunday morning working on the retaining wall. That's what stuck out to me when I was walking there, but. Um, that's why I remember it, so.
Yeah, so so since the start um of the project, they um. Did come back with an application for for the zone. They changed it. We determined that it it didn't. Meet the zoning requirements, uh, but in the meantime, they. Applied for another permit to the house, uh, well, I'll call it house, it's a uh combination uh dwelling and business. Uh, so they took that, they did the fire separation they need to needed to between the business and the house. Uh, changed the deck, changed the access points uh to exit the. The dwelling portion of the house and and redid that work, so. Uh, as part of this project, the last part of it, they have to do with the retaining wall is allowed to stay, and you'll have to. Add another foot or so as a guardrail protection on the on the top of that to, again. Um, you'll probably notice there's a fence now, but just beyond the fence, the the wall's pretty low, so they're gonna raise that up just to. Keep anyone from falling off. Uh, it's probably a significant fall off the backside, uh roughly fifteen feet.
Any other questions? Alright, then I'd move that we continue this until August sixth for a draft decision. And hopefully we'll have some advice from town council by then.
And if if that's saying, I'll have a draft decision ready for the board to consider.
Your second?
Second.
Alright. Alright, moved in second and to continue to August sixth, Dave McMorrissey.
Matt Watkins, aye.
Woody Chiracai. Joel Higgins and I.
Lee Darstai.
Mike Tikiye.
Um, Matt, what time do you have to jump off?
I've gotta run now. I gotta, yeah, I was gonna run at eight, so.
Congratulations on being a. A full member now.
Thanks, Woody. Thanks for all your uh.
It's for life, Matt.
I know we could have gone on for a long time about.
You know, I started this process.
At you for so long.
I started all this entire process long before the uh Joe Biden thing ever surfaced. So it's completely independent.
Alright, thanks.
Well, Woody, there's no no appearance of you having lost your fastball, so.
Uh, no, no appearance, what? What?
Of you having lost your fastball.
Ah, ah, never mind. Alright. I sacked it through all, you'll know it was time.
One thirty-seven Nichols Road. Oh, no, I'm sorry, seven twenty Jerusalem, right?
Seven twenty-three.
Oh, okay, wait a minute. Is next on the agenda.
Yep, you're right the first time.
Yep.
Um, if the representatives or applicant for this application, Adam, okay?
Um, this is the. The giant rolled up plan. Evening, Adam.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Adam Brodsky and I represent the applicant. My name partners LLC and Brian and Tyler Crumley. Can you please promote? I see Susan Odeley and Karina Martinez are architects. As well as Caroline Reese, our engineer with Merrill.
Yes, I'm promoting Caroline now.
Alright, so who's gonna tell us what this is about?
Oh, I I'll begin Chair Luke Morris and good evening again. The only member of our team who's not attending tonight is Sean Pappich, our landscape architect. Uh, this property is located within the Residence C zoning district. And portions are located within the FEMA floodplain. It's an AE elevation thirteen flood zone. And therefore within the Cohasset floodplain and watershed protection district. The lot itself is pre-existing and non-conforming. And there's a non-conforming single-family dwelling on the lot. The dwelling is non-conforming with respect to. Uh, two setbacks. Uh, it's non-conforming with respect to the front yard setback. Thirty feet is required, and the dwelling is eight point five feet from the street. And the side yard on the western side of the lot. Um, uh, twenty feet is required and ten point two feet presently exists. We're proposing to enlarge the house essentially on the existing footprint to accommodate. Uh, the Crumley's family. We're essentially going up and adding our roofs, roof porches and decks. We're proposing to increase the residential gross floor area from two thousand two hundred eighty-nine square feet. To three thousand three hundred eighty-one square feet. Uh, which is candidly smaller than the existing dwellings in the immediate neighborhood. Uh, the building height will be conforming. The project does not trigger a large form review. While not necessarily relevant to your zoning review. Uh, the applicant is proposing to remove large portions of the existing driveway. And replace that with. And replace that with native plantings. Um, and we have a robust landscaping plan prepared by Sean Pappich. Conservation Commission liked the project and voted to issue an order of conditions approving it. Uh, there is also proposed a modest increase of structure within the floodplain. Um, we recalculated those figures based upon some additional information. And those new figures are in my July eighth letter, uh, which we sent to the board. Uh, we're proposing to increase the ground area coverage of the dwelling and patio in the floodplain. Uh, by two hundred and forty five square feet. That's less than three hundred square feet, which is permitted under section nine, uh, three hundred dash nine point. One one, which pertains to alterations of nonconforming structures within the floodplain. And with that short introduction, I'll have Karina and Susan take you through the neighborhood context. A better description of the project as well as the facade area calculations. And Caroline is here to bail us out and answer any questions. So let me turn it over to Susan and Karina. Thank you.
All right. Mister incoming chair and uh members of the board, it's a uh delight to be here with you tonight. I'm also here with Karina Martinez, who's. At the right to my right, who's going to. Uh, answer technical questions and has a lot of data on him should uh should those questions go there. So, um, I'd like to reiterate uh what Attorney Brodsky uh. Talked about when he said that the uh the existing building. At one thirty seven Nichols Road. Is twenty two eighty nine square feet, essentially tw- about twenty three hundred square feet. And that the Crumley's are. Uh, proposing to increase that to thirty three, about thirty four hundred square feet. And uh while that um addition on its own is a hundred and fifty percent. We think that uh the way that it will fit into the site. Um, is respectful of the height, scale and mass of the houses that are around it. And I would invite you to just keep that um thirty four hundred. Uh, square foot. Proposal that we're making in your head as I take you on a little bit of a tour of the site's contacts. The picture that you see on the upper right here is the uh, the the. The streetscape uh viewed from uh Sandy Beach and zoomed in on the houses that come off of Nichols Road. We are second from the right at one thirty seven, which you can see is really uh the smallest house with no close second. Um, in the entire neighborhood and we would like to explain how we think that the height, scale and mass will remain. Uh, really the the smallest house in uh in the the precinct when it's finished. The map below shows. Uh, how big the site really is and how small this small house is on the site. As Adam mentioned, we are really only using existing footprint. And proposing to go up within um largely within our uh right to build within outside of the setback. The um, I'd like to take you on a little bit of a very, very fast tour of of what's around it. One thirty one Nichols Road, which is sort of right up behind it. Granted, is a condominium building, but its height, scale and mass um lends it to. Thirteen thousand square feet. A hundred and thirty three Nichols Road to the right is eight thousand square feet compared to the. Uh, the thirty four hundred we're proposing. One thirty five Nichols Road is fifty eight hundred. One thirty Nichols Road is twelve thousand. Uh, on the lower left, we've got one twenty Nichols Road coming in at eight thousand. And then just sort of traveling along to the right because I know uh we've got a big agenda, we've got uh. The smaller ones at fifty two hundred, fifty six hundred and four thousand, so even the smallest ones are yet another. Uh, it's significantly larger than what we're proposing. So what I'd like to do is bring you into the uh footprint of. What what we'd like to do. So here's the existing lower lower floor, I'll just bring you right through all the existing. Drawings, the existing lower floor has five hundred and seventy three square feet um sitting in the setback, so this is a uh very. Challenging nonconformity. The uh five hundred and seventy three square feet total includes another, right, if you could mouse over it, little triangle here. Okay, so that's the lower level and I'll go to the next drawing of, this is the existing first floor. Which shows the nonconformity toward Nichols Road in a similar slice or triangle um. On the uh west side, go to the next one. And then when we get up to the existing second floor, which is that sort of little pilot house that's up on the top of the. Of the roof as it sits now, uh, that's two hundred and eighty seven square feet of nonconformity. So you can see that what we're dealing with is basically a house that is, you know, it's got a a good. Chunk of itself in the setback. Uh, but then we are challenged by the fact that we don't want to move toward the resource area, so we've come up there with this um. We've come up with this. Strategy to basically build on the existing footprint. Next. That's the existing roof and. Here are some uh facades, um, you probably will recognize them. The northeast, uh, almost half of the right part um toward Nichols Road is in the setback. Uh, on the um, on the north, did you scroll down? Sorry. Good. Want to be consistent here, on the southeast elevation, we have that little triangle that uh you may remember seeing in the plan. Then on the uh southwest elevation, we have nonconformities, uh, both the. So, go back. Sorry about that, we're back, we have nonconformities um. On the left hand side of the top drawing, you'll see the southwest elevation. The left portion is in the uh Nichols Road setback and the one that is on the right is that triangle. But then when you get down to the northwest elevation, you really see that what exists now is an existing nonconformity that. Basically presents a wall to the street. Um, Sean Pappich has uh plans to um soften and improve that. Um, that wall on the street, um, if he were here, he could explain. It, but um, oh, we'll go to the, let's go to the proposed now. Oh. So yes, so this is what we are proposing. So on the lower floor, the only addition that we are proposing is an outdoor shower. It is in the setback. It is uh the the. The nonconformity is shown in the yellow area, uh, but the area that we have chosen as our outer. Uh. Outer corner is parallel to the property line. Um, sort of. Offset from the existing nonconformity of the corner of the existing house, so that's how we decided to strike that and. Uh, ask for relief for that uh small outdoor shower piece.
Yes, Susan, is that, what's the distance from the property line? From the outdoor shower and from the existing corner referencing?
Um, it, how many feet?
Mm-hmm.
I could. Would you like? About eleven point four.
I'm sorry, what?
I'm sorry, eleven point four.
And to the corner of the house? That you're.
No, that's the.
That's from the shower.
The the existing, yeah, the eleven point four is the same from the corner of the upper server, the property line. As is the existing nonconforming corner.
Okay.
Of the existing house.
All right, and is the outdoor shower shower have a roof?
Uh, we don't think so, no. It's probably basically like a garden enclosure. Yeah, so that's a, that's the proposed lower floor as we go up. We have, uh, we see that outdoor shower below. In the drawing and we also see that uh we are proposing squaring off. The uh, the sort of um, the the old style bay window. And those two pieces will actually um become. Uh, part, one is, one is in the setback and one is well inside. We thought it best to highlight everything we're doing though for clarity. And then the uh, the majority of the additional footprint on this floor is really covered porches. And um, and decks. And then over though on the garage side, um, we are proposing um a. An expanded bump out that is only nineteen square feet and within the. Bounds of the. Nonconformity that is there now. And there's no foundation, it is literally sort of a a hanging bed. Yep, next. Then when we get up to the second floor, um, this is the area where if you'll remember where the area, the area I call the pilot house. We're actually proposing to um to add to it to create a family room. Uh, to expand that. That pilot house which had a sort of a very narrow footprint to create a good kitchen. And to um, to to add roof deck coming off of those. Those rooms, the staircase is also new construction. Um, it will go into the setback line, but again, within. The existing bounds of that eleven four, which I'm glad we established that. Uh, which is actually less than eleven four on that side. So to go to the next floor. The next floor, which is the third floor is new. Um, it cre- uh, it basically creates a uh a new pilot house shape recalling the old. Uh, the old house. And it it spills out onto a roof deck. Which we've been careful to place parapets. So that deck furniture and things like that are concealed. In most part of the parts of the roof deck where uh the family's stuff will be, but have strategic um. Areas of clear railing that will relieve the 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 mass in the back. Over to the next. And this is the resultant roof plan. Um, it, by the time you get to the roof, it's all part of the proposed addition. Um, it's all low sloped roofs in the pilot house location. Spilling out onto uh the roof deck, which is at the floor below and the awning yet below that. So to show you what it will look like in elevation, uh, let's go to uh. Yeah, so these are the new areas, uh, the building while uh may look ju- jarring in line work will actually just be a very simple quiet. Somewhat contemporary shingle style form with probably matching weathered. Um. Uh, posts that create pergolas on the outside. We um. To, just to describe the um overall height, it's thirty four ten, which is well within the um. New zoning bylaws, the. Expand, the extension to the top is a cupola that complies with uh if if zoning relief is approved, it will. Fall within the allowable pupilas that are uh permissible under the bylaws to get uh natural ventilation through the building. And since it's located above the stairs, it will function exactly that way. We are um. Proposing in the top elevation, the area that's. Uh, outlined in red. Yeah, area in yellow is the area we need relief with. Same when you come down to the uh. The elevation that is from the the wetlands. And that, and we are seeking zoning relief for this piece that Korea's running the mouse over and uh part of the outdoor shower. Finally, uh, we are seeking relief on the um southwest elevation in the the area in yellow. Which is essentially the, it's the bay that bumps out. Parts of the third floor. Um, the. Pergola on the second floor and parts of the stairs, and then when you go to the Nichols Road elevation. We tried to break that up as best we could to sort of relieve the monotony there, working along with Sean with his foliage proposal. We are uh looking at um. Asking for zoning relief on this, on this area on the second floor. As well as that expansion of the extension out over the garage and then finally the third floor, again, you know, these are. The main part of the building is at thirty four. Uh, and thirty four ten and uh. Complies uh other than needing zoning relief for where it is in plan dimension. Next, I think that's it, I think that's it.
Sheriff Morris, we're we're happy to answer questions and again Caroline's available uh for any. Uh, site plan questions.
I had one. Quick question, this. The existing structure is not being raised, is that right? R A Z E D.
That's.
That's correct.
It is, this is, yeah, this is um altera- an alterations and additions project.
Right. Um, well, Michael, you're um gonna be writing this, so why don't you take the.
Um, I I I guess, hey, Susan, um, I guess the first question that I I'd ask it, could you confirm? What the total existing nonconformity is? Uh, and then what the proposed nonconformity will be? Uh, should you get the relief you're looking for?
So Karina's gonna put up the table. And uh, Karina, could you bring them through this? Hi, Mike, um, so our facade area table here, um, basically, the the way that we calculated this is that we started with. Each elevation and showing the existing area of nonconformity. And um. The table to the next is showing the additional nonconformity. So, but when we came to the last table here, this is the percentage change. That would be from. The existing nonconformity in addition to what we're showing, what we're proposing. We we didn't break down, um, so this is important. So it's it's really the percentage change that we're, I think that's what you're looking for, these numbers.
Uh, but but but.
But Mister Dickey, the the total existing structure, well, I I should be careful here. But, well.
So, yeah, so you have, uh, bottom line, you have, it looks like existing structure of um. Uh, twenty one hundred and change uh in uh the of the side and you're gonna have. Uh. Why is that number less, the fourteen oh five?
That's.
Could it be more?
That's the new, that's what we're, that's the additional um. Nonconformity, nonconformity. So. If you add these two. So if you add these two numbers together.
Thirty-five ninety-five.
Okay. All right. Um, thank you. Okay. Well, that, that's in the materials. I can, I guess, reference that. Uh, what about, uh, uh, butters and neighbors? Have, have you, have, have, have the owners spoken with, uh, various neighbors and they kind of shared their plans and gotten feedback, anything like that?
Mr. Dickey, it's Adam Brodsky. I believe that there has been outreach to some of the neighbors. And I'm not aware of any, uh, uh, I haven't been informed of, of any opposition.
Okay. Those are kind of the two big, two big questions I always ask. Anybody else on the, on the board have thoughts or suggestions or questions?
I do. Yeah, um, I'd like to know what the, uh, square footage of that, uh, topmost uh, structure is. It's called not for human habitation or something.
Yes.
And, uh, well, first, the, the, the topmost the existing roof deck up, no, non-existing, proposed. Proposed.
Yep.
Okay, so I'd like to know the, um, forget the roof below, it's the low slope roof. Uh, the square footage and then the size of that, uh, cupola or whatever it is. And percentage.
This is, uh, fifty square feet.
Yeah.
And then the roof area is eleven hundred and four.
So it's less than five percent of the total.
Correct.
Now, um, what is the, the purpose of this?
Ventilation, ventilation.
So you've got, uh, by my count, ten windows in that, on that little structure. Three in each side and, uh, two, four and a half.
Yeah, I can, uh, show you. So there's windows on all sides. These are all operable, remote controlled, on an operable on. So the idea is that they get a lot of, a lot of ventilate, cross ventilation through here.
So there, there isn't any access stairway or anything of this?
No, it's not. Occupiable.
Okay, no, I, I wanted to know how you.
Will be the person that changes the light bulb up there.
Well, that's, that's when you hire somebody. Yeah. Um, okay, no, I wanted just to be sure that you were within the five percent limitation.
Yeah.
For height, because it's thirty-nine and change to the top of that structure.
Correct.
And are those statistics, were they in our packet? You said fifty square feet. I, I'm not sure if they weren't, maybe you could submit them.
Mr. Tidic, they're on the site plans.
They're on the site plan.
The architectural plans, that should be more specific, not the site plan, uh, you, you're looking at the architectural plans.
I'm looking, I've got the site plan here.
Yes, sir, I, I misspoke. They're
That's not what I want to see. No, that's.
They're in the architectural plans.
Right.
On the front page.
Numbered, numbered is what?
They're on the front page of the big rolled up plan.
Front page.
Are you specifically asking about the square footage of the?
The topmost roof area.
Yes, sir.
See it online.
Corina, which sheet were you referring to where it has that information, please?
Yeah, yeah, which sheet is this?
A one oh four, A one oh four.
A three one oh four, bear with me. Okay, so I don't have any, uh, do I have any statistics on this sheet? I don't think so.
Uh, there's a note pointing to the low slope roof which has the calculation. Or at least the conclusion.
Okay. And that doesn't include the roof below, the slow slope roof.
It includes the roofs.
It can't include the roof below. It has to, uh, uh,
No.
That's not the way the bylaws written.
No, it's, it doesn't include the roof below. It just includes what's on this uppermost roof area.
Right, so I, I think it would just help me understand. Well, wait a minute, when you go way over to the, sorry, uh, to the left side of this, the area below, uh, just below the roof below. That, that isn't the topmost roof, is it?
No, that's, that's a roof on the second floor.
Yeah, so I would, I, I, it would be useful for me to see the statistics for low slope roof. Uh, both of those designations and, and then that fifty square feet or whatever it is. Kind of, um, um, increase there protrusion. Just to be sure that, that the math is right, that's all.
Sure.
And what you're doing and all that, but it, it's, you, you can't add anything from the second floor to, to that calculation. It's, um,
So you're asking for just a graphic that includes that number, the eleven hundred square feet?
Yeah, where does that come from? I mean, I guess I could measure it, but I, I'd rather not.
Mr. Tidic, we'll, we'll provide you with the dimensions used for the calculation.
Yeah, yeah, that would be useful.
Okay, we can do that.
And, and, and just make sure that none of the second floor gets thrown into that calculation.
Okay, yep.
Okay. That's all I had. I mean, there's a lot of increase, but, well, you know, I'll defer to my colleagues here.
Yeah, um, a- anybody else on the board have questions or comments?
No.
There are a few comments in the, uh, Q and A if the board would like to hear them.
Yes.
Yes, please.
Uh, so, uh, somewhat in response to your question earlier, Mike, in regards to whether or not they had spoken to any of their neighbors. Um, a Mr. Mike Pace, uh, said that they have not heard from them. They have never met them, although they, uh, believe that the proposed home looks beautiful. Uh, and then you also have Ken Paul, who says, "We are the neighbors directly next to the Crumleys and think their plan is a nice one and we're supportive." He spoke to Brian and discussed that where the front entrance and outdoor shower are moving closer to the property line from their existing non-conformance to the setback, if they're understanding correctly. "These two places happen to be right in our view of where they have a dead tree and a missing tree that came down on their property last year." "He's told me that they will work with us to make sure these gaps in an otherwise well-shielded property line with trees will be filled in satisfactorily for us, including if any changes are necessary to the existing landscape." "I accept his commitment on this."
That's positive. That, those, just the two?
Uh, and then Mike Pace said again that they are also very supportive of the proposed plan. It again is beautifully designed.
All right.
Mike, could I just jump in and just, uh, on, on this? I don't mean to be, um,
Well, you know, you're no longer the chairman, Woody, so.
I know, so that's, I'm asking your permission. I'm asking your permission. Is, is the awning, I, I don't think, is the awning part of the calculation of a roof area? I guess it is, isn't it?
That's.
It's the highest point of any structure. Okay, well, when, when you, when you finish up the, the calculations and make it into a table, you know, include the awning. Which I think would be legitimate.
Yeah, okay.
That's all, small point.
Is the awning permanent?
Yes.
And it's kind of like a roof then?
It doesn't have to be permanent, um, if it's, if it's a part of a building and it, and it would be, it shelters.
All right. So, uh, again, um, you know, going once, going twice. A- any further questions or comments from any of the board? Uh, hearing none is then, uh, the discussion whether we look to continue this hearing. I know, uh, Woody, you've asked for some additional information or, uh, we, we close the hearing assuming that we'll get what we want in the interim and, and.
Well, the only problem is you've got two weeks.
Yeah, we're not gonna close it.
File a decision.
We're not gonna close it.
Okay.
Cause generally speaking, we continue it to give you an opportunity to draft a decision. Then we'll deliberate on the draft next meeting.
All right, sounds fair. I have no objections to that.
And we'll be really prompt with that, uh, the memo with the calculations on it.
Great.
All right. Well.
Is anybody else? Anyone on the board, anyone in the audience have any further questions, comments?
I'm just gonna interrupt quickly. Um, my house has just lost power. Uh, and I don't know how I still have internet. So you may lose me completely soon.
You're the host. Do you want to change hosts?
Yeah, I just figured I would give you the update.
Did you, did you pay Verizon this month?
I, I certainly did. Um, I'm gonna make John a co-host. Um, and hopefully you don't lose me. Like I said, I, I don't know how I still have internet, but I'm sitting in the dark.
Okay, wow. This means you have to stay to the end, John.
You know, the cell that hit you is moving towards us. Is it a cell that's, that's the issue here?
I, I have no idea.
All right, do we have a motion to continue?
So moved to continue this until August sixth.
Second? I was second. Hang on. Moved in second, it continued to August sixth. On favor, take it with more aside.
When he try to guy.
Yar's die.
Uh, Mike, Dickey, I.
Madrela Higgins and I again.
Okay, that's it. So let's continue to August sixth and Mike, you'll be working on a draft between now and then.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you. Good to see you. All right, so next we have the one forty Border Street. Which is a dock. And who do we have presenting for that?
You have Kevin Grady.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Yep.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Um, we're, uh, ready to present, um, Kevin Grady from Grady Consulting. Uh, representing the applicants, Philip and Rebecca Ivy, who with the special permit for the proposed dock at one forty Border Street. Um, can I share my screen? Everybody see our site plan? Um, so the property is located in the RB district. Um, private boat docks are allowed by a special permit, um, in the RB district. In accordance with section three hundred dash nine point seven E. Um, and section three hundred dash four point two, which is allowed by special permit, the IB zoning district. Uh, special permit uses three hundred dash nine point seven, uh, E says non-residential structures incidental to any of the uses allowed under three hundred dash nine point five of this article such as private boat docks. Are allowed by special permit, however, the same, the same generic C twenty feet in height or two hundred square feet in total ground coverage. And that the water quality and natural drainage pattern of any water course is not adversely affected thereby. I'll review the plan shortly and discuss the, that standard. Um, section nine hun- section three hundred dash nine point five allowed uses. Uh, letter C, outdoor recreation, including, but not necessar- necessarily limited to boating, golfing, nature study, which would be coincidental with, uh, the use of a dock. So the uh, property location and zone is appropriate for the application, uh, before you, which is a special permit. Um, so, so far we have filed with the Conservation Commission and we have received an order of conditions. We've reviewed the plan with the harbor master and have, um, approval via email. Um, plans are also submitted to Division of Marine Fisheries who have provided some comments that we have addressed. So the site currently exists in existing single-family dwelling. Um, a portion is also the, uh, property in the dwelling about Bailey's Creek here to the rear, um, the north side. There's an existing salt marsh. Uh, located to the north, which is demarcated by these flags and the dotted line. The northeast portion of the property is then a FEMA flood zone AE elevation ten. Which is this contour here. And it's labeled in this location. Uh, the applicant is proposing to construct a hundred and twenty-nine foot long, four foot wide dock with a thirty-three foot long, uh, ramp and ten by twenty float. Um, this location was chosen because it provides the least impact to the marsh. It's the shortest distance, um, from the upland to the navigable water. The we're utilizing, so utilizing this existing stairwell that goes to a path that's already there. Minimizes impacts to the buffer zones, which was discussed with the Conservation Commission. Um, the float location was chosen because it provides, um, it's right in this little inlet. It, uh, reduces the distance needs to, uh, the float needs to extend um, out into the water and it maximizes the navigable channel. Um, compared to other potential locations along the, uh, Bailey's Creek frontage. The dock's gonna be supported by twenty-four six by six posts. And it will be elevated, uh, six feet above the salt marsh. Um, and that provides the one and a half to one foot height to width ratio. Um, that is standard for, for the docks. Um, this project does require a special permit from you, the zoning board of appeals. It requires a chapter, chapter ninety-one license. Um, from the EP Waterways and will also require Army Corps General Permit. Comments that we received from Division of Marine Fisheries included, uh, instruction mats. Uh, uh, will be utilized for access across the salt marsh, whoops, sorry. Um, so to be temporary, um, two foot wide, eight foot long mats that will be accessed, uh, by foot traffic. No machinery will be on those. Um, there's no proposed piles within the title flat. Uh, the float will have float stops. The float will have float stops. To prevent grounding. So see in this view here. We have the float. And we have basically float stops here. The dock will be constructed of EPA approved CCA lumber as recommended by me, Division of Marine Fisheries. The location is mapped within prohibited shellfish growing area. See, the dock provides one inch space spacings between the boards. For light penetration staging and storage, storage of materials will be on the upland portion of the site. So we have a couple of different views here of the cross-section. Again, we're gonna be six feet in height. We have one foot spacing along the decks. Six by six posts is what we're proposing. We, we did note that we might need to bump those up a bit depending upon the the penetration and the spans. If we, you know, encounter some difficulty. If we need to increase that span, a larger diameter pile might be beneficial. Proposing a 33 foot long by three foot wide structural ramp. The float is a encapsulated flotation. It's basically surrounded by wood and decking and it's basically the black typical floats you see. Is, is a cross-section of the dock section, cross-section of the float. And we've based, and we have an example, the very similar example of what this dock will look like. I guess I will leave it at that and take any questions that the board may have.
Had a couple quick ones. There's an existing float out there?
Yes, that is proposed to be removed.
Is that hooked to anything?
Yes, so zoom in here. This concrete block that I believe this is attached to.
Okay, are they coming out as well?
I, if they're required to, sure. I don't see anything on this plan that proposes it. I'm actually sitting in for Paul Seberg, who was the preparer of the plan. So I don't, I can't really speak to that exact detail.
Okay, it's just a question. It's not our jurisdiction. So I'm just curious.
Sure.
Conservation might have an opinion one way or the other on that.
Yeah, they might've put it in their order that I have not reviewed.
Okay.
But they have signed off in this order of conditions.
Okay, anybody else have questions or comments on the board?
I, I do not.
No, I don't.
I don't have any questions.
Right, certainly. I, I, it does call into question, this is, this is an aside, but 97E sets up a very generous standard of approval, as long as it doesn't exceed 20 feet in height, which is outright dangerous, or 200 square feet of ground coverage. You know, my estimation on this, even if you go large, it might maybe 10 or 12 feet of total ground coverage. We have never in my, all my years had proposed dock covered at 200 square feet, something for another zoning bylaw committee to deal with, but not, not this one. Kind of a trivial standard. Signifies nothing.
We, we discussed that when we were reviewing this site.
You, you might wanna when you do any final submissions or updates, just so we have a record of it. It's always good to say that the height is not gonna exceed whatever it is 11 or 13 feet and ground coverage is, you know, estimated to be 12 feet square feet, just, just so we have it. It's not a knockout factor at all.
Sorry, I missed the beginning of that. You, you broke up in the very first sentence.
Okay, well, it would be a good idea to address why you comfortably meet the standards of 9.7E, which is not more than 20 feet high and not more than 200 square feet of ground coverage. You're far, far away from those standards, just, you know.
Think we have that in our
Okay.
Doc description and, and as part of the application, I believe we're at six square feet.
Right, right. You said you may go to 10 or something.
Yeah.
You had 12 pounds, you know, big deal. It's, it's not a.
Agreed.
One question, isn't there a state regulation that you have to be able to walk underneath it somewhere? To allow access to Bailey's Creek?
Yeah, so we will be filing with DEP and also Army Corps. I think, I believe DEP will be the authority on whether that is passable. Six feet. I'd be able to walk under it. Five, 10.
Yeah, I think there's a standard, I think standard is six feet.
Yep. Though I do think it's passable.
All right, any other questions or comments? Any, anybody in the audience, Cassandra?
No, you do not have. Yeah, turns out my house didn't lose power, just the room I was in lost power. So figured that out, tripped the breaker somehow, but I'm good and you don't have anybody in the audience.
Okay, well then I move that we continue this for deliberation till the August 6th meeting and Matt Watkins will be drafting a decision in the interim. Second?
Second.
Second.
I moved in second to continue to August 6th. Allos in favor, Dave McMorrissey.
What do you try to guy?
Trilla Higgins and I.
Lee Darstai.
Um, Mike Tiki, I.
All right, so we're off to August 6th, next one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So our last hearing tonight is 723 Jerusalem Road. Expanding a single-family dwelling. Who do we have representing the applicant on this one?
You have Brendan again.
Good evening, Brendan Solomon again. I think Patrick Hassan's and I always see Joe Lenz is there.
I'm promoting Patrick now.
Great. So I'll pull up the plan for the property. This is 715B. B is in Boy, Jerusalem Road, also known as 715B. It's got a new address now. The new address is 723 Jerusalem Road. It's in the RB district. The in about Straits Pond to the north. As you can see, this figure here is probably most representative of it. It's between 725 and 713 Jerusalem Road, north side of Jerusalem Road. Accessed by a narrow 20-foot right-of-way that gives access to the locus lot in 715 and 715A. It's a conforming lot with respect to area frontage, if you count the frontage off the right-of-way. Lot width and building setbacks, except for the front yard setback, which is 0.6 feet. The lot line is right in here. Where the right-of-way is. And the setback to the right-of-way is just over half a foot. There is a floodplain on the Straits Pond side, which is elevation 10, which comes into down in this area in here. Graphically, it's just outside of the footprint of the house. So the route of the floodplain rolled both graphically and by elevation. It conforms to side yard setbacks, rear yard setbacks. Both side yard setbacks, like, as I said, the only non-conformity is a front yard setback. The addition is not expanding the footprint at all. It's really just adding over the existing garage and over the connector to the main house, which basically this part of the building, this part of the house is two stories. This part is one story. So the road is going up approximately a story. If I can give you an idea, there's a picture of the house, as I said. The two-car garage, the addition is going over the garage in this connector here and not all, and it doesn't go all the way front to back. So like I said, the footprint isn't changing. And this is the driveway here. One other thing I want to mention on the, on the site plan before I get into the architecturals is they're also adding a gravel parking area on this side of the house. Just because as you can see from the picture, this driveway here is actually access to the other house in the rear. So other than parking in the garage, there's, I mean, you can be able to get a car in front of the garage before you're blocking that way to the rear portion of, to get access to 720 7, 715A. So to the architectural plans. Let's see, let's start with the front view, which is a view, I think, most appropriate here. Like I said, there's the garage doors. This gray hatch is the addition. Most of the, go back to my plan, I'm sorry. So the building, the front yard setback comes through. I mean, I would say midway through the house, but it's more like to the back of the house. So most of the, a good portion of the dwelling is in the front yard setback. And that's taken the setback, as you spoke about earlier, this is the setback taken from the edge of the right-of-way. Not from the center of the right-of-way, even though it is less than 20 feet. So back to the architecturals. This is the new addition. For the front view. This is the right side view. Even though it's conforms to the side yard setback, all this is still in the front yard setback. So this is still in the non-conformity section. Scroll down, there's some asymmetrics that give you an idea. Overhead view, the area in red is the new addition. So volume-wise, we are we are adding approximately 5,200 cubic feet. Existing is about 31,000. So we have about a 16%, almost 17% increase in volume in the front yard setback. The facade front yard goes from about, the existing is about 1166, proposed is just under 300, 284. And we get about a 24 and a half, almost, you know, so even a 25% increase in the front facade. And, you know, you always wonder, like I said, this is the right side again. This facade is a little bit bigger, but once again, this, this is the right side. Even though it conforms to that side yard setback, this is the, this is the area that's in the front yard setback, looking at the side, if that makes sense. So this line here is the building setback from the front yard. And that increase on that side is approximately 55% going from 160, going from 304 to 167. I think that's about it. Like I said, I get the owner and the architect on board. Do you have any questions for them or for myself? These are the, these are the floor plans. So the, the blue is the existing. The tan is the new. So the bedroom pretty much encovers the two-car garage. 21 feet wide by 22 feet deep. And this is the new bathroom and such. It doesn't go all the way front to back. It's the existing back of the house for the connector to the main portion. I think that's about it.
All right.
End you with an easy one, right?
Right, this one is Lee's. So Lee, why don't you take the lead on this? Are you muted?
Brendan, what's the overall increase in the square footage?
Overall increase in the square footage for the, you talking about the gross floor area for?
Yeah, yes.
It's about 750 square feet. I think it's 753. And of that I'm trying to, if, if you go to the, the next sheet, Brendan.
Sorry, who's, who's speaking?
I'm Joe Lanza. I, I designed the building or the addition. The proposed addition is, well, the proposed non-conforming part of the addition is 559 square feet. And then there's another 193 that's outside the setback. So it's, it's right around 750 square feet.
So what will the total be for the house?
It's about 3,700.
And what's the percentage? Do you have the percentage increase?
Looks like about 20%. Is it Joe's, the 3,700, the existing?
It, the existing is just under, under 3,000. And we're adding 750.
Well, if existing is under 3,000, you're showing on this table that it's a little less than 1,400. Where did, where's the rest of it?
These are broken down by floor.
Oh, okay. So this is on the second floor, then the first floor, which doesn't change.
Right.
All right.
Right, there's about 1,600 square feet of living space there.
Okay, I'm, okay, I'm. So what is, what's the current living space right now? Total?
The current living space is just under 3,000 square feet.
So 2,900 and something?
Yeah, I have let me switch. 2984. And we're, we're adding 752 square feet. So that's about 25% increase. So that's about uh twenty-five percent increase.
Okay. So you say it's about twenty percent in the setback, the total increase?
Oh, of the total increase, uh well, we've got five hundred and fifty-nine in the setback. And a hundred and ninety-three outside the setback.
Okay, twenty-one point two proposed increase in the total nonconforming. Um is there any neighborhood feedback?
Uh none, none that I am aware of.
Yes, I'm Metro Kansas, I'm the the homeowner, my my wife, Jessica here with me. Um yeah, we've, we've gotten feedback from uh from many of the neighbors, we've had a really nice letter from the, or email from the, from neighbors at two fifteen A, the. Sorry, seven fifteen A, thank you. Uh and they're, they're in full support of the project, um as well as we've had verbal support from the project from the two of the other immediate dividers.
Be helpful if you want to forward that email to Cassandra, so we can make it part of the record.
Sure, yeah, I'll, I'll reach out to the, to the Duns and make sure they're comfortable with that, and then, yeah, I can forward that to you.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions, Lee, you know, so?
Uh no, and this is not in the floodplain, this is outside of the floodplain, correct?
Yes, that is correct, outside the floodplain.
Okay. I don't think I have any questions right now.
All right, any other board members have questions, comments?
No, I, I don't.
All right, how about?
I've been here not as long as Charlie, only fifty-three years, I never have been down this, this uh. Collection of homes, I mean, it's amazing, and I think what you're doing is uh quite, quite appropriate. So, but it's, boy, talk about tucked away.
So if I go down there to look at it, there's no place for me to park?
Yes, that's the problem.
So, because we usually try to go and look at the location, I know exactly where it is, because I live right off Forest, but I um. And I drove, I drove by it the other day and was trying to figure out exactly where it was, so um. So if you see somebody. Down the driveway that doesn't look like they belong there, that could be me.
No problem, the, the house is vacant right now, so you know, you're free to go.
Oh, so I can park in the garage, as long as I don't block the other park.
And Lee, you don't look very threatening, so I think you're. Probably okay.
I'll walk down there with my dog, I definitely won't look threatening then, uh it's not, it's walkable for me to just get there, uh it's not very far, so um. Okay, I don't have any other further questions now.
All right, Cassandra, anybody in the audience?
Uh you only have one person in the audience, and they are not raising their hand.
Okay. So uh there are no further questions or comments. I'd move that we continue this to August sixth, where we will. Look at and consider Lee's draft opinion.
You, do you want some of those figures put on paper that we talked about, total square footage of the house and the addition and such?
Um sure, because I know they're all on here, it's just that they're floor by floor by floor, so if you just want to shoot an email or. You know, clarifying it, Brendan, that's probably fine. That way I don't have to do a lot of math.
Yep.
Want to avoid math whenever possible?
I want to avoid math.
Is there a second on the motion, continue?
Uh second.
All right. David Morrissey?
Lee Darcey.
Mike Dickey, aye.
Woody Chitikai.
Charlie's muted.
He said it the first time, he said it.
Okay, good. All right, well, that's the um end of the hearings for tonight.
Great, thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So let's move to deliberations on Four Great Rooster Trail. Charlie, you want to lead us through that?
Charlie?
I didn't hear that.
We're gonna deliberate on Four Great Rooster Trail, you want to lead us through that, what your thinking is on it?
I'm gonna insert the new figures in, in the decision. And uh uh the various extensions of the nonconformities. Uh and then I'm uh, I don't think it was stated, but there have been no uh. Uh uh comments from neighbors, uh and as I pointed out, uh the. Enlargements or no houses within fifty, fifty, uh within fifty feet. So that um. There, there's uh. The, I would guess, I have to look at the figures, the new figures, uh. Uh around a thirty-five percent volume increase, but that, that uh seems reasonable in this case.
I don't see any detriment to the neighborhood at all, at this point.
No, nor, nor I, I, I would like to see building coverage uh. Come in at twenty percent or or less, you know, I mean, some of the numbers may have been a little fuzzy in terms of how big is that shed and. So on and so forth, just when they, when the numbers get finalized.
I agree.
All right. So I'd move that we approve a special permit for Four Great Rooster Trail. Um subject to them getting the information, Charlie, in time for him to write a decision within two weeks from today.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, David Morrissey?
Charlie against an aye.
Woody Chitikai?
Lee Darcey.
Uh Michael Dickey, aye.
And actually, I may be recused on that one.
I was just gonna say, I'm gonna clarify for the record that Dave's vote doesn't count on that.
Okay. Good, so our next meeting is August sixth.
I believe you also have some minutes to approve.
We do have, we do have the June fourth minutes to, to review. Um has everybody had a chance to look through them?
Yep, they, they look fine to me.
Okay, and anybody else?
There are a couple of uh typos, uh so uh. Re- review them, I, I found at least two.
Okay, and is it? Sandra, did you do these or Montana?
Montana did those.
Can you fix them?
Yes.
Okay, Charlie, can you get the typos to Montana or to, to Cassandra to fix?
Yes.
Anyone else have comments on the minutes from the June fourth meeting?
No, I think it was fine, I think Charlie's right, second flood side as opposed to second floor side, but those are.
All right, well, since I wasn't clear, I'll entertain a motion from someone else to accept the minutes as amended, corrected.
I will uh make a motion to accept the minutes as amended uh by the typos that uh. Charlie will send over to Cassandra.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye, Charlie Aginson.
Woody Chitikai?
Lee Darcey.
Uh Mike Dickey, aye.
All right, the minutes are approved. Any other business or discussion that anyone has?
Um my term expires, I did do all my submissions. Many, many weeks ago, and I did actually call the selectman's office, and they said that I am a member. Until someone says I'm not, and that they will keep me notified of anything else I have to do.
All right, I'm in the same boat, my term's up too. You know, they just, they told me that sometimes I get around to it a little later, so.
Yes, so, so I'm, I'm still here, so uh, and they have.
I was also informed that there's not a line of people clamoring to get down the zoning boards, so.
I, I, I can't imagine why. There should be a line around the block.
One would think so.
It should be shaping our town.
You're too nice, Mike, you're a good guy.
Okay. So, anybody have anything else you want to talk about?
No, I, well, let me just ask John, uh is, are there any sort of big? Updates on the previously approved projects that are taking their time, I'm thinking of the condos down in the harbor or. The Atlantica area or um John Schavos thing, and I, you, you, you don't have to, I mean, just if there's something really new or. Important, otherwise, if it's just business as usual.
I, I, I have been by Schavos as early as this morning. They're probably uh thirty days away from occupancy, with getting all the information into conservation and uh. The final sign-offs and um I think the last piece was that, was ready for some information on affordable housing. Uh so he's gonna get me documents on that. Uh the condos, I have a walk-through. Uh Thursday morning, we're there, they are getting close on the. One twenty-four and one twenty-eight, which are the waterfront properties. Uh I probably anticipated a month before they're ready on the first waterfront property, then probably. Weeks behind for the other one, pools coming along there too, um. And actually have a meeting next week with uh the Atlantica project. They are, they are starting to move along the demo portion, and they started to do some build now. Um and so that, that's where they're at, but they're just, they're saying we have a, we have a meeting next week.
And the condo people, I, I mean, Lubitz and George McGoldrick at all. Understand that that first floor is going to be uh mixed use, retail or, or some sort of.
Yes, there's um, there's, I think, three, first floor units there with the uh. With the retailment or something on the um north building. Uh which is, I think, one twenty-four. Uh so there's some space in there, they haven't got tenants yet, but the, uh they put a vanilla blocks in the, in the areas. And they're looking to rent those out, or lease them out.
I noticed this morning they started on the Beechwood store.
Oh, really?
Yesterday, they took the roof off, and then they took the rafters down, and today they took the second floor down, I think. Maybe be finding a little more. Structural problems than they're hoped for. But, it's in progress, everybody's very excited.
Um I had something that I talked to Woody about a few months ago, when we had talked about the minute, and this is just maybe for people to keep in the back of the mind, since we're gonna have a new clerk. Is to format the minutes the way we do like our decisions, so that um. Uh for a new person to start and consider what's, what's in there, I thought that maybe we could. Offer some streamlined by doing a format for the minutes, because they're all always recorded. So some of, some of the details might not have to be in all the minutes. So just something for people to think about if we want to come up with a format for the new clerk to follow for, for the minutes.
That's a great idea.
I guess my question to you would be, are you looking for the minutes to be? More detailed or less detailed?
Probably less detailed, um y- you know, um diff, we've had so far, we've had a lot of clerks, and everybody has a different. Format for them, sort of like how much detail they put in and how much they don't put in, and whether all of our comments are necessary. Um to be in the, to be in the minutes, if all, if every comment that um. That members make are necessarily have to be in the minutes. Or are there just chunks of information that need to be in there, but not every comment?
Yeah, I, I mean, I personally would agree with that, I think that there's definitely room for improvement, and that they could become more streamlined, so that we're not. Necessarily capturing every single thing that is said, but you're still getting the gist of what is said at the meeting, which is really the point of minutes. It's a summary of what was talked about, um I guess. I just wouldn't want to eliminate too much, because I know that you guys rely on them a lot to write your decisions, so I wouldn't want to take away. Too much information, and then you don't have enough to write your decisions. So I, I guess I would leave that up to you guys on how much information you want in them.
I know I'm one of those that realize on the minutes to write decisions, but I do think having the assignments done upfront. Helps with that, because you don't find out at the end that you're the one that's gonna write, so. That should help, but I do like to have, especially the dimensional and. You know, the square footage of facade and all that kind of stuff, I like to see that in the minutes.
No, I, I include that, I, I agree with that, but we've had some minutes in the past, in the past year that have had a lot of comments. That aren't about numbers or facades, or you know, just comments that people. Say during that, and um the other situation is, is what we had, we didn't have in many years past, was to be able to go back and. Um and watch the hearing again, to, to be able to highlight our own. Um to be able to, to use that to write, to write with, but, but, you know, our decisions don't have. All necessarily, I mean, I would say that our decisions probably have. You know, fifteen percent of the comments, twenty percent of the comments of board members, so. Um I just thought if we had a format that could plug in information, it would also. Um when the next person, because sometimes our minutes aren't ready the next month, which doesn't help us, but um because maybe it was too long. Like this had, you know, we had six, six different, you know, addresses that we talked about. So if we had a more streamlined plug-in the information for the minutes, then um maybe they'd be easier for the clerk to prepare. It's just, it's just something to think about.
No, that's a great point, um since I will be doing your minutes for this meeting, um I can. Kind of play with the formatting a little bit as like a example, um and then if you want to tweak it. With, you know, more information or less information, um moving forward, we can play with that a little bit. Um but, yeah, I think that it would be good to, you know, for. You guys and for the person taking your minutes to kind of just streamline everything to make it easier for you guys, um. And, you know, we could even work on. Setting sort of a format of like streamlining your decisions in the way that they're written, that way it's kind of plug-in information. Um and it could be a little less work on you guys as well.
You know, Cassandra, you might ask Carolyn. Um with all the minutes and all the towns she deals with, are there one or two kind of. Idealized formats that other towns have developed, you know, that she feels are satisfactory, comprehensive enough, but not too much. And she may, you know, be able to give you another town's minutes as, as a guide as well.
Sure, we could look into that.
Yeah, I like our decision format, I think it's um, you know, it meets all the requirements that a court's gonna want to see. And I don't think they, they have much more information than is necessary in them. All right, any else?
Um I actually had one quick thing, um. I was speaking with Woody earlier, and he noted that he needs an updated paper copy of the bylaws. Um so I'm working on getting him that, but I wondered if any of the rest of you need updated cop, paper copies of the bylaws.
That would be great, Cassandra, thank you.
That would be great, I mean, it's still a flip through things to get it, it's much easier than having to go online and. Look for everything, especially the. Especially the chart, the chart that you said is now, um, part of four point two, I think, and not part of the the back part, and so I think that, I think it'd be helpful to have the updated, um.
Just to clarify that, Cassandra, would, uh, do you guys have books now? And we just sort of have the updated
That was gonna be my next question, is how many of you have the rather, okay, so Dave does not have the binder that I'm looking at.
I don't have the, I have that binder also.
I don't either.
Okay.
You don't have the binder, I do, okay, so.
Nope, that's different. So John and I have versions that are like the entire town bylaw in a thick blue, very official-looking binder.
No, no. Don't give us that.
So, okay.
Okay, that's, that's why we want to make sure.
That was gonna be my next question, is how many of you have that? Because there are supplemental sheets for those. But, um, I can make you copies of just the zoning bylaws. Got it.
Yep.
At least for me, I mean, I
Yeah, I find that the yellow stickies don't work on the computer at all.
Then you can't see it.
It's hard to see the screen after a while.
Yeah, I mean, eventually I'll get used to the new numbering or, or ordering system, but you know, I've had enough time, so I can, I know where in the old version I can go, but I don't know where, I mean, I asked Cassandra today about section, what, uh, Article four, section eighteen, or something, or Article four, section three. Well, they're totally different now.
Mm-hmm.
And I couldn't tell you what they've changed to, but it helps to have a frame of reference here, rather than by trying to search around.
Okay, well, I will work on, um, getting you all copies of those. It may take me a little bit, um.
It's all right, we don't
That's fine. We definitely appreciate your help, and we're so glad that you stepped in, and, um, so glad that you're helping out. And, uh, where's the new person from?
Uh, I don't recall what town she lives in. I don't believe she lives in Cohasset, um, but she's somewhere on the South Shore. Um, she was the, uh, she's leaving a position as the Assistant Town Planner in the town of Born to come to Cohasset.
All right.
You may have, does he have a big commute? I don't know.
Maybe, much smaller one than she had.
Yeah, I, I think the commute's probably about the same. She, I think she's somewhere between Born and Cohasset, so.
Different direction.
Yeah, I don't think it's changed any, any distance anyway.
So you won't have to go across the bridge.
Yes.
Right, anything else?
Great.
Good. Anybody have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, second?
I got it.
All right, who in favor, David Morrissey?
Charles Aggenson, I.
Uh, Michael Dickey, I.
We have to work on our roll call.
I'm, I'm working on that.
You can do it alphabetically.
That's what we're gonna do.
It's throwing Woody all off.
Yeah, I don't know whether I should jump in, or now that I'm a in a different status.
Well, you're probably gonna go first, because you're first in the alphabet.
Yeah. And it's my nature.
The incidence, I put a happy coincidence.
Well, good night, all.
Good night.
Good night.